Let's call this General Committee meeting of the St. Bernard Parish School Board April the fourteenth, twenty fifteen to order. We will all begin with the prayers. Senator Bocey, pledge allegiance. Uh, Mr. Isart?
Dear Heavenly Father, we are grateful for the opportunity to be of service to the children and community of St. Bernard. Lord, we are thankful for the many dedicated teachers, administrators, and support employees that come to work each day, ready to do their best for the students in our schools. Help our teachers, Father, to find the enthusiasm, drive, and determination to keep active and energized classrooms going, now that we are in the final stretch to the end of the school year. And please continue to bless our students with good decision-making skills and the stamina for their best efforts. These things we ask in your name.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with all due and necessary.
Senator Bocey, would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Acevedo is ill tonight. Mr. Campbell is not with us. Mr. Egan?
Here.
Mr. England?
Here.
Mrs. Lemoine?
Here.
Mrs. Isart?
Here.
Dr. Craft?
Here.
Dr. Lewis?
Here.
Uh, Mr. Long is ill, as well as Mr. Nikosia and Mr. Warner.
Here.
And we have a corps.
Yes.
Item four, Ag Magic.
And Magic.
Mr. Burgess and Ms. Lauren Forrest are over here from the Department of the Exchange of the District.
Good evening. We want to thank you guys for having us tonight. Uh, we have a short presentation to show y'all from, um, last year about Ag Magic. Um, I've given you some information, which is, there's a fold-out there, which is a statewide fold-out that the LSU Ag Center produces each year. Uh, the green sheet is just an itemization of the types of programs and the activities we're doing throughout the school year with the kids. And we've got, uh, it's about a four-minute video to show y'all from Ag Magic from last year. Miro Foundation is proud to host LSU's Ag Magic on the River. We have about twenty-five-hundred kids scheduled for the next three days in, in groups of forty to sixty, taking tours, highlighting all the agricultural events and, uh, products of Louisiana and our region.
The Ag Center was interested in bringing it to the New Orleans metro area. So, we had put together a group to find a site, and after looking at a couple different locations in the New Orleans area, we settled on Dockville because it's a perfect setting for this. It fits in great with the surroundings. The barn and the atmosphere are perfect for, uh, events like this.
This is a free event. There are no charges. You will be able to enter a stable, two barns, and an observatory area. And in the barns, we have interactive educational activities. We have, um, gardening activities. We have information on forestry, aquaculture, coastal restoration with the different grasses that are grown to preserve our coastline.
In order to put on this event, we need approximately fifty volunteers a day to help out with all the exhibits that the kids are viewing today and to serve as tour guides. So, we came together as a community and recruited volunteers from all different organizations and businesses and Shellman High School. And I think they're doing a wonderful job today, interacting with the students.
We talk about sweet potatoes and carrots and radishes as being underground plants or root vegetables, yet our tomatoes and our bell peppers and squash are all above ground. We do have a crawfish farm here. There's a, rice is grown in a pond, and it's stocked with crawfish.
Aquaculture is when you grow something in water. If you have more than one thing growing at the same site, you call it polyculture. So, we have aquaculture back here, which is polycultured with two different things. What are those two things? Rice and crawfish. Right. So, we start off, we start off in the rice field behind us with a bare pond, and then we take little bitty seed rice, and we spread it on the floor, and we put a little water with it. Then we develop these seedlings. The little, the little rice seed grows into seedlings. This rice seedlings, the rice seedlings in the pond are one month old. By the end of July, this summer, when you're on vacation, the rice will be this tall. It's gonna, it's gonna be taller than the traps in the pond. And then we harvest the grain heads on the top, and this is what we make brown rice with. This crawfish is introduced into that pond, he's gonna eat the rest of the plant. Remember, we said we harvest the top, and then the crawfish is gonna eat the rest of the plant, and then we harvest the crawfish.
In other areas of the state, this has become a yearly event, and that is our goal, to make this available yearly for the students in St. Bernard Parish, as well as the public.
This is a hands-on example of what we can do in a community to educate our children and their families as to the importance of agriculture.
for us. Uh, we want to show you a little bit of what we were trying to do with Dockville last year. Lauren has all the specifics on, you know, who all came through and how many kids we saw and everything.
Yeah, last year, um, about, I guess around eight-hundred kids a day came through. Um, all the third, fourth, and fifth graders in St. Bernard Parish did get an opportunity to tour Ag Magic, um, last year. And then, you know, we collaborate with our whole fourteen parish area to put this on. So, Jefferson, Orleans, St. Plackamans, uh, St. John's, some students from those parishes also attended last year. Um, this year, we advertised it, um, and again, this year, third and fourth graders from St. Bernard are gonna have the opportunity to go. And then, we're, we're booked full every day with, with school groups. About a thousand kids a day are gonna go through and visit the, um, the exhibits. It takes about, I think we're estimating this year about an hour and forty-five minutes for the actual tour. So, the students are probably on the property about two hours, fifteen minutes or so. Um, they spend about five minutes at each station, and then, again, we have the volunteers from the community to, you know, put on the educational exhibits. And you saw just a, a few of them. There's probably gonna be close to forty, thirty-five to forty exhibits this year. Um, and then usually, the, last year, the students from Shellman High School served as the tour guide. So, each group of students that went through, each class of students that went through had a tour guide from Shellman High, you know, bringing them through the, the property and kinda keeping them moving along and keeping things flowing for us. Um, so that's kinda, um, you know, some of the particulars about it. Um, we, I have a handout there with the dates and, and times of it this year, if you guys get a chance to pass by. On Saturday, it is open to the public. Um, so, last year, we had about six-hundred people that came and toured on that Saturday. We're gonna do a bigger push this year and try to get information out to the schools to give to the kids to bring home, to try and draw some more students, um, you know, from the area and their parents on that Saturday. And we're also gonna try to have, I think, some more hands-on type, um, things and demonstrations on Saturday, when we can take a little more time and, and not have, you know, so many kids going through it one time, but take a little more time and people can kinda do it a little more at their leisure. So, if you guys, any of you guys have a chance to stop by any of those days, you're welcome to come and visit and see what we're doing.
Any questions or comments? Any questions or comments by board members? We certainly appreciate y'all coming by.
Um, it was, it was unusual, wasn't it, an unusual cold front that came through?
Yeah.
Cause I can't believe it's been a year.
It did.
And everybody was in...
It did.
But it was a, it was a strange event, but it was beautiful weather. Yeah, the weather was so... Y'all gonna order that again this year?
Not a week like this, but the first day, it did rain a little bit, and then, after that cool front came through, it made the weather really nice.
Good. I can't believe it's been a year, but I know it's a great event. I know we had the first one last year, but this ought to be another fun event this year.
And we appreciate all the groups and, and support that we get in, uh, St. Bernard Parish from all the organizations and everybody that has helped, you know, come on volunteer. Cause it's an undertaking.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, uh, Mr. England?
I think it's a great opportunity for the kids to get further education with, with the LSU, you know? And so, uh, I really appreciate all that y'all, that y'all do for our school system and for the kids of St. Bernard Parish. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Yeah, Ms. Doshen?
Thank you for your presentation. It, it did look like it was quite a, a massive undertaking, and it looks like it was very, very successful. So, thank you for all your hard work.
Thanks.
And like you said, many volunteers came out and, um, and volunteered to help through the groups, and then Shellman High students, as always, do a great job.
Oh, yeah.
And, uh, it, it just seems like, uh, it's a great learning experience. So, thank you for not only the, um, Ag Magic, but also for all the work you do with the four-H programs throughout the year. Y'all do a great job.
I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate Miro Foundation in Dockville.
Yes.
I mean, especially with the addition of that new billing they have there, that just, it adds another element to everything.
Yeah. We can expand some things this year.
And you said, it's how many parishes that are also, um, that are involved in this Ag Magic?
The ones who send students are mostly Orleans, Jefferson, St. Bernard, Plackamans, and St. John sent some students last year. But there's a fourteen parish area that we're a part of that actually the agents, um, in four-H and some of the agriculture agents come down and actually help put it on.
Okay. So, it's a definitely a collaborative effort.
Oh, yeah. You saw that last thing where they're rolling all those credits, so everybody that participated and helped, it's a bunch. And we, and we need that, but we really appreciate it.
Well, thank you.
Appreciate y'all for all the help y'all give us during the year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is very good, and I see it's open to the public, and we'll announce that Saturday, May the seventeenth, from ten to three, and that's down at the Dockville area, and, uh, they will participate and observe. And it's great for our students to know that everything doesn't come from a bag or a box in the grocery store and to understand these products that is...
Our fast-food grocery store.
Yeah, it's food, right.
That's part of the concept of your company.
Right, yeah. And, uh, and this is a, this is a good learning experience.
And I wanna say this, I'm trying to mean to cut you off.
That's all right.
I wanna say this year on Saturday, um, there's a lady we used to work with, um, who is with a, um, spinning group, and I think she's bringing one of her old spinning wheel, you know? She knows actually how they take the lamb's wool and spin and create twine.
Is that Agnes Hurdle? Is that Agnes Hurdle?
Um, she might be a part of it, but it's, uh...
The lady that's coming down, uh, the contact is Beverly Medea. She's part of that group, and so, they're gonna do spinning, and I think they may even do some weaving and, you know, explain the agricultural aspect in the textile industry.
Absolutely. That'd be interesting, so...
I think it is.
That seems like, in modern days, it's a lost art, and that takes someone with special skills in order to, uh, perform those techniques. Yeah. I liked that prize. That's one of my favorites.
Well, we appreciate y'all having us. I know y'all got plenty to do in mind. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Faust and Mr. Burgess, appreciate all you do.
Thank you.
We have a presentation, item five, for the board training for twenty-fourteen.
Uh, just enclosed in your packets are the certificates from the Louisiana School Board Association certifying that every one of our school board members participated in the required professional development and training for the year twenty-fourteen. So, we want to read, have these, uh, put into the official minutes, and they'll be published in our official journal as well, certifying that in accordance with an act passed by the legislature, that every school board member has completed the required professional development and training. And many of you have far exceeded the number of hours, that, the minimum number of hours that are required. I know Dr. Lewis and, um, Dr. Craft and Mr. Warner have done that distinguished board member, where it's at least sixteen hours, I think, for one of the four years, and I think maybe Mr. England may have done that as well. So, there are, uh, just want the public to know that every one of us sitting around this table are well-trained and, uh, have participated in all the required workshops and training. So, that will be read into the official minutes and published in our official journal. So, it's just informa... No, just informational to do that, so to make sure that the public realizes the necessity for the training and, um, how each and every one of you have exceeded all the minimum requirements. So, we want to make that official. Okay?
Thank you, Ms. Bocey. Uh, congratulations to all of you board members that have done this and up to speed on all that's required by the legislature and the governor. So, uh, we appreciate you following suit. Uh, next item...
Just a comment, just to all our students out there. You see, too, all, even younger, all, uh, adults need to go back to school, too. And continue education.
That's Dr. Lewis and I, we're doing postdoctoral work in that respect.
Yeah.
Uh, item six, uh, Ms. Isart, discussion of jumpstart pathways here on the Education Committee.
Thank you, Dr. Craft. Okay, item six, jumpstart pathways. And with us tonight, we have Ms. Jessica Vallongo.
And let me, right, let me just, uh, formally introduce Ms. Vallongo. I don't know if she has, if every one of you have met her, but Ms. Vallongo is, um, a staff member at Shellman High School, but is in charge of our career and technical education program. And with the, um, legislature's new initiative on career diplomas, we hear a lot about jumpstart. Uh, she's here with us tonight to talk a little bit about those pathways and what we've done partnering with business over the course of the last few years, and with Nunez Community College as well, and bring us up to date and answer any questions that you may have.
So, we have this year two really exciting initiatives that started, uh, the first being supplemental course allocation, which was formerly known as Course Choice. And through this allotment, we were allowed to, allowed to enroll over five-hundred-and-fifty students in courses at Nunez that range from medical terminology to certified nursing assistant to welding to a P-Tech associate degree. So, that, the first exciting change that's happened. The second is jumpstart. Um, and it's my understanding that y'all got a little preview of jumpstart earlier in the year. We've had to create a regional group that consists of Orleans Public Schools, Plackamans Parish, of course, St. Bernard, Jefferson Parish, St. James, and St. John, and together we're known as the Gulf River Region, and it has been an honor to represent St. Bernard on this regional team. Um, we were early adopters of the jumpstart initiative to develop pathways, and as such, we were allowed to push through five of the first pathways that were accepted by the Department of Education. These included manufacturing, construction trade, and logistics, health sciences, digital media and entertainment technology, information technology, and hospitality, tourism, culinary, and retail. So, those were all accepted by the Department of Education, and those are the, some of the pathways that we're adopting here locally in St. Bernard. All of this was due to the support of Nunez as our post-secondary partners and Melissa, Melissa Kirsch with our workforce and investment board, because when we bring these pathways to the state, those two entities have to be on board with us. So, they're advising, they advised us through this to allow us to get these pathways approved. Um, so, jumpstart is an overhaul of the career diploma, but it is not just an overhaul of the career diploma. It's an effort to make students job-ready upon exiting high school, or as close to job-ready as we can get them, to move them to a post-secondary like Nunez to continue getting the skills that they need to get a job in the skilled labor, labor workforce. Going into a jumpstart program is not just for career-focused students. Students who take jumpstart classes can still get and qualify for TOPS. In fact, right now, we have a CNA program, a certified nursing assistant program, and the majority of our students in that program want to continue to a bachelor RN program. We have two students in that class, one is taking a biology AP class on our campus, and one is taking a psychology AP class. So, these are not just for that career-focused student. We also have a great P-Tech program that we call Early College Academy, where the students, they started in their junior year, when they exit high school, they will exit high school with an associate degree in process technology. Most of those students are staying on a Core Four track and will be TOPS-eligible. So, they'll graduate high school with an associate degree and be able to move into a four-year college with TOPS funding, which is awesome. Hey, I'm a little jealous, honestly, with it. Um, so, this is, it's exciting, and it's, it's just the beginning. The pieces were in place before I came into St. Bernard, before I moved back down home. But with the help of jumpstart and with Ms. Bocey, we've been allowed to open new doors and establish partnerships with associated terminals, with the film and television, television industry, both here in St. Bernard and in New Orleans, with health sciences and our new hospital. We've been, we've, we've been allowed to move students on this career track that will set them up for high-wage, high-demand careers. And it's just the beginning. We've done a lot of work, but right now, we're laying the foundation for new pathways that really affect us here in St. Bernard, and that's the, um, the entertain, the, I'm sorry, the performing arts and event management pathway, which is one of the ones that we're working on right now.
Thank you, Jessica, for your presentation. Um, are there any questions or comments? Mr. Warner?
Just, um, does Nunez have an open house coming? Do you know if they have one?
Yes, sir. Nunez actually has an open house going on right now as we speak.
Oh, okay. I knew it was coming up. I didn't realize.
Excellent. Yeah, they have a great open house going on right now.
So, anybody watching us at home, you can run over there and learn all about jumpstart, right?
Exactly, exactly.
So, would you talk a little bit about, as they go through these career pathways, what they exit with, the types of credentials possibly?
Yeah.
Give a couple of examples with that?
Yeah, if a student, um, if a student goes to a career diploma, they are required to graduate with an industry-based credential, and so, the handout that you have in front of you has all of the pathways that we've formally adopted here in St. Bernard, and on the left column of each, you'll see the pathways that we offer at Shellman High School through our partnerships at Nunez and at Raleigh. So, those are, um, that is one of the requirements of the career diploma, but our students who are Core Four get the same opportunity to exit with those credentials as our career diploma students. And so, those are credentials that have been, um, that have been approved by the Workforce Investment Council and adopted by the Department of Education. So, this initiative really comes from the industry down to education, so it, it really is high-wage, high-demand, industry-focused. And our pathways, we're required to accept only pathways that lead to high-wage, high-demand jobs in our region. So, all of these are with, with the Workforce Investment, um, Commission, we've been able to show that these jobs exist and are, will exist in the next few years within our own region.
And talk a little bit about what's gonna happen Monday with your advisory group.
So, Monday, we have, um, our advisory committee, which is part of the Carl Perkins requirements. We will be hosting currently twenty-five industry members from our parish and, um, a few from out of our parish that will be touring our facility, our wonderful facility, to see that we really are offering a state-of-the-art education when it comes down to our facilities. Every time I walk through our film and television program or our information program, the, the students have so much at their, at their fingertips that they can use. Um, we'll be going through in detail what the adoption of jumpstart looks like for our community, for our, for our schools, and for our students, and seeking feedback from our community to see what we've missed, what we can change, what we can improve upon, and also to get, um, those, those, those real-life partnerships where our teachers can start reaching out to the industry to get speakers in, to place students into internships, to bring students to, um, a restaurant for, to see behind the, the back of the house, if you will, um, for field trips, things that they don't get to normally see.
Mr. England?
My question is this, maybe Ms. Bocey can answer this question. Um, with the budget cuts up from Baton Rouge and everything, how would this have any effect on this, these, this is great opportunities for the kids.
Mm-hmm.
And for all the kids in St. Bernard Parish. Uh, would this have any, um, effect on our position?
Well, yes, no, maybe, and definitely. So, they, the issue, the issues are, these are very expensive programs.
Right.
We're talking equipment that is necessary, materials and supplies. If a child takes a welding course or takes, um, construction or CNA or process technology, which is, there's a lot of supplies, a lot of materials that are necessary for it. There is an allocation, um, that the state has put through the MFP this year, which is called Supplemental Course allocations. And, uh, we do receive sixty-eight thousand dollars this year from the state to pay for tuition for some of these courses. Nunez has been really good in working with us to make it affordable so we can increase the number of students that are, um, able to take some of these more technical courses. The only problem with that, with the cuts to higher education, there's a movement, um, to increase the tuition that we would have to pay for these students, which then would reduce the number of students that we're able to serve. So, we are putting together several funding sources. We have, um, business and industry who have stepped up in some ways. We have, uh, allocations, we have a few dollars through Carl Perkins, which is a federal funding source, some monies through the state. We put local monies together with that, and we try not to deny any child the opportunity who shows an interest and an aptitude for doing this. And I think as the program progresses, we're going to see a balance of funding, some, some shifting, you know, in that funding as more students access these particular pathways. So, we're making it work. Um, as usual, funding is always an issue. Uh, we're trying for students who cannot afford it to make sure they do have those opportunities, where we're providing the resources necessary in the materials and the clothing and the goggles and the, everything that they need to, uh, be successful at that next level.
Yeah, because it is a great opportunity for the kids, and I would really hate to see the state really mess up on this deal.
I know. Well, like Jessica was talking about in the process technology, which is a, the big one everybody talks about all the time, we've got how many of them that are still on track with that associate degree?
Twelve.
Twelve of the students that completed are completing the first year of it. They'll complete the second year this coming year, and they'll exit high school with both a high school diploma, the associate degree in process technology, and then the ability to make a decision to either move directly into the workforce at that time or to continue in a four-year, uh, through a four-year degree that is related to that, possibly more of an engineering focus or such beyond it. So, it's, it's, you know, it's really difficult when, and I, and I guess maybe this is a time to, to make this type of a statement. You know, a few years ago... You know, a few years ago, or years ago, we used to have a very vibrant, what we called vocational education program. We had our own trade school, if we all remember this, and St. Bernard Parish was known for the tradesmen that they produced or that we produced. Times changed then, and for quite a while, the focus became over the last few years, well, it just seemed that wasn't good enough. Everybody wanted to have, or the, the message being sent was a four-year college degree. So those crafts and trades got pushed to the background. And K-12, in response to that, K-12 education, we had to do a major shift where we basically killed those programs, because the state was not recognizing that as a pathway that was good to go through. So every parent then got into, into their minds that a four-year college degree was for every child. So we did that way, swing, all the way in the other direction. Well, now, business and industry and the people in the state of Louisiana realized that for our economy, a skilled workforce was extremely necessary, and that we were not producing the workforce that was necessary to meet the demands of business and industry in the state. And to be perfectly honest, that in many of those occupations, the financial reward far exceeded anything that we could earn, maybe as a four-year college graduate. So when you looked at it from the economic perspective, as well as what young people were interested in, you know, that these are wonderful viable opportunities for all of our students if they so choose. So now, what we're trying to do with students and their parents is to say, these are viable alternatives. Talk about, let's talk about what your son or daughter is interested in, what pathways are available to them, what skills they can acquire in high school without closing any options beyond that. And we're meeting with some resistance, because now the mindset is, well, no, we have to go to a four-year institution immediately for the college degree and not look at this. So we're beginning, I think, to change some minds and some aptitudes, because many, many, if you look at the rates of young people who begin college at the age of 18, and they're out before the first year, because they were never really interested in pursuing that type of a pathway. So I think we're in the process right now of trying to counsel with students and their parents that these are wonderful viable options, not for every student, but for many students, or you can look at it duly. You know, we have these kids in Process Technology who want to be engineers, and we have those in Process Technology who want to go immediately to the workforce. So you can go through these and make your choices at that time, just like the CNA program. Some young people want to exit with that credential and go straight into the workforce. Others wish to continue and get a four-year RN degree or something else in the medical profession. But these are good stepping stones while they're still in high school, and it can be married with the TOPS curriculum so that they can be eligible for both TOPS and directly have a Jump Start, as they say, on a very high-paying and very satisfying career. So I think that's part of the marketing that we need to do and with both of our, you know, our students and our parents and the community in general.
I agree.
Is that it, Mr. England?
That's it.
Okay. Dr. Correa?
Yes, yeah. Thank you, Ms. Longo. This, this is a good start, and we need to expand this, but as I've said before, we need, within driving distance of all students within the state, you need a comprehensive community college that can coordinate with high school students, that they can get trained beyond the high school level, and not, not everyone is suited, or do they want a four-year college degree, but they can be functional enough to go out in the career paths and earn good money. But they need that technical and vocational training in many areas. Now, of course, I can tell you why this has not taken off. In many respects, over years, it's about money. Equipment and machines, all of that costs money. It's a lot more expensive, expensive than a copying machine. It's a lot more expensive than chalk and an eraser. So this is what has held it back, and until the responsible people that hold the purse strings within the state, until they loosen up on this and decide now, we want a well-trained workforce, that's what's going to make a difference. You have to invest money within the state. Other states have been successful with it, and Louisiana needs to step up to the plate and do this. We need people like you in the trenches there that can make, can make it happen. But you can't make it happen unless you have a money trail to supply the resources necessary for the program to be successful. And this is what we need to have legislatures be aware of, because they pass the law, the State Department of Education and all the districts around the state, they're limited in what they can do based on the resources that they have. So that's, that's all I got to say about that.
Thank you, Dr. Correa. Ms. Lamoy?
I have something real quick. I just want to thank you, Jessica, for all the hard work that you've done at the community college for the Chelmette High students. I get to see you there on a daily basis and see the hard work that, that you've done to really support the unique needs of each child and the parents, and, and working out the kinks of the program this first year. And I also want to commend you. You presented at the state conference for all the community colleges, and you were really looked to as the expert for this program. Many of the other high schools and colleges that want to follow suit were coming to you with questions, and you did a great job presenting. So thank you for all of your hard work.
Okay, anyone else? I just want to say thank you for your presentation, Jessica, and thank you also for all your hard work. And you stated in your presentation, our students really are blessed to have a program such as this, the Jump Start.
Yeah.
And, you know, we do need to also thank the industry, business and industry who cooperatively work with us to have the interns and, and to help us have our students have this kind of curriculum available to them. So we also want to thank them. And, and are there any other comments or questions?
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, and good night. Thanks. Next item? Dr. Correa?
Yeah, number seven in your package is personnel changes for, for this month. You peruse those, and if you have any questions, Ms. Boche will be happy to respond to those. It's a short one, and that's good sometimes.
Well, that's good in the middle of the year. But we do have, I just want to point out, we do have a retiree, Lynn Dear, who has been with us for many, many years, had taught both at Andrew Jackson High School prior to the storm, and then at Chelmette High School, and she's definitely going to be missed. She's an excellent teacher, and we will miss her greatly, but we do expect her to be around and help us out as she always does, so.
Yeah, yes, Ms. Dear has been a very dedicated to our school system, going back, my youngest daughter, she taught her, and she has taught to my grandson, so. So Ms. Dear, very, very able educator and does a good job. She will be sorely missed. Any comments, questions relative to the personnel changes? Ms. Lamoy, you have item eight and nine, 10.
Item number eight is the 2014-2015 Revised Funds and Special Revenue Funds Budgets, and we have Mr. Fernandez.
Thank you. In your package, you have the revised 2014-2015 budget. As you recall, the original budget was adopted in May of last year, and we did a technical revision in August just to re-budget encumbrances and some year-end fund balances. But this is our revision for the 2014-2015 school year, so it's basically refining those original numbers that we did back last May. There are several exhibits. The first three relate to the General Fund. There's a summary, which is exhibit number one, and that shows that the total revenues we're expecting, total expenditures, transfers and other financing sources, and our ending fund balances. Exhibits two and three are the detail on those revenues and expenditures. So basically, what we're doing with revenues is we're recognizing some increased revenues from antivarm taxes based on the final assessment figures on properties. There's a slight increase in sales taxes due to our experience. We still have a few months to go in the year, but we feel confident that our sales taxes is going to be up a little bit. And the other major revision will be the increase in the MFP funds from our increase in student enrollment based on October 1st and February 1st student counts. So that's going to increase our total revenues to $67,297,884. The expenditures budget, we also have a detail in exhibit three, and basically what we're doing is we're adjusting our expenditure amounts for salaries and benefits to reflect our final staffing figures. Remember, back in May, it was just an estimate of what we need. Now, we're going in and reflecting the actual number of teachers and employees that we hired and the related benefits. The other major changes, we have increased slightly the utilities cost, because now we have the MOMA Center that will be coming online. It'll be opening soon, and we have utilities run to it, so we're going to budget a slight increase for that. We also have an actual amount for our final transfers out to other educational agencies of $137,089, which are the local funds that are going to charter schools, other schools that our students are going to. So basically, our final expenditure figure is $66,499,189, giving us, after we reflect all our regular reservations of our fund balances for the different items that we have, a total ending fund balance of $11,714,692, of which $6.3 million now is undesignated, which is within the limits set by the Department of Education to reflect a healthy fiscal school system. Do you want to take these one at a time or just do them all? Exhibit four is the lunch fund. We're going to go in and revise that slightly as well. Isn't a big revision, but we're just kind of refining our estimates for revenues and expenditures, which you'll see in exhibit four. And they're ending up a little slightly better than we thought they would at the beginning of the year. That's due to some cost-cutting measures that have been implemented by Mrs. Bloom, and they've been successful. And also, some things are incumbent, and it's not quite as expensive as we thought it was. So we're going to do a slight revision on that. They will have an ending fund balance of $460,050. And exhibit five is just a listing of our federal grants. These are the final allocations for those grants. So these are things that you have seen in the past during different presentations to the board. We're just reflecting what our final amounts are on these different particular grants, so this is just for your information, basically. But basically, that's the revision. It's not a drastic revision. It's just refining the numbers, like we said, and kind of trying to tighten things up. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions? Yes.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Fernandez.
Yes, ma'am.
So it looks like the lunch fund is, the deficiency of revenues is, is much less than we thought it would be because of Ms. Bloom saving some money on the tightening up?
Right. The excess of deficiency has gone down, right, because she, they've tightened their belt strings. They've listened like everybody else, you know, about the need to tighten up. So they're doing their best to tighten up wherever they can, and she was very successful with that this year.
Commendations to Ms. Bloom, but I also had a question. Is the participation up in the lunch with the program?
Participation's kind of steady. It's at the levels we anticipated. It varies a little bit from day to day, but it's, it's, we have a little increase in enrollment, but about the same in, in participation.
Okay. And then one other question I had, the, the funds going out to other agencies, how many students does that equate to?
Total of 47.9 students.
Forty-seven point nine?
Yeah. Some of the funds, in one of the particular agencies, they, the students don't go there for a full year, so they'll take a portion of a student for that particular time period, so. Forty-seven point nine.
Thank you very much, Mr. Fernandez. Appreciate that.
Any other questions?
Oh, I'm sorry, and with that, that includes the local funds, all local?
That's the local portion. There's also a state portion of $285,000 that goes directly to those schools, particular schools. The 137 just reflects the local funds that are deducted from our MFP contribution to go to the, to those schools. That's what we recognize, but they also have $285,357 that the state sends directly to them in state MFP funding.
So the MFP funding goes directly to those individual schools?
The state portion, and they also reduce our MFP funding by the local contribution, which they send to those schools.
Because they know we would not cut a check with local funds. We would refuse to do it. So what they do instead is decrease our state funding by the amount that they say our local obligation is.
Okay. And our local obligation is sales tax and?
It's based on our local revenues.
And local revenues.
Yes, ma'am. They convert all of our local revenue connections into a per pupil amount and?
That's going to another parish?
Yes.
In many instances?
All the schools are located outside of this parish.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification, Mr. Fernandez.
Okay. Dr. Craft, did you have a question?
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Lamoy. The, the state's getting good about reducing our MFP and not expecting us to write a check for some things, and, and of course, our tax base and taxpayers' fund is local monies to support the public schools within St. Bernard Parish, and it, I, I question the fairness of that, but of course, until the legislature decides that they were going to make things right, that's the only time things will, will change. But in, in the lunch program, there was a slight increase in lunch prices this year, was it, this school year?
Yes, sir. And that resulted in a slight increase in local revenues.
Right. So that, that always helps. So, so again, you have a fund, fund balance there of what, $460,000 plus? And what was the beginning balance at the beginning of the year?
Beginning balance was $446,000.
Forty-six. So, so again, that helped us keep within the realm of reason there, and so that's, that's, that's important. And of course, David Comenion, one of my former math students, and a good shot. You got everything tied together very neatly there, and we appreciate what you're doing for the St. Bernard Parish School Board in the financial arena.
I learned everything I know about budgeting from eighth grade, man.
You know your old math teacher would tell you if you made mistakes, right?
Who's the one? You have a question?
No, I just want to make a motion that we send it to the board.
Okay, do we have a second? Okay, second and by the side, sorry. Any other further questions or discussion? Please vote your machine.
Motion passes, 7-0.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have the discussion of Senate Bill 85, the Local Inventory Tax.
As, yeah, what, there is a bill being introduced in the legislature. Well, currently, let's, let's back up a minute. Currently, there is a property tax on inventories for business. But what actually happens is that local businesses will pay the inventory tax. But what actually happens is that local businesses will pay the inventory tax. The local governmental bodies will get their portion of it through the millage. And then, currently, the state reimburses businesses dollar for dollar. So businesses are not in any way hurt by that because while they pay the inventory tax, the state turns around and reimburses them dollar for dollar. That's how it currently stands. Well, with the state budget situation right now in cost-saving measures, there's some legislation being introduced to repeal that inventory, that reimbursement of inventory tax by the state. If that would happen, there are some other pieces of legislation to repeal the tax itself. Now, if the tax is repealed totally, what that does, there are figures that the assessor has given to us that show that twenty-eight percent of the local property tax in the parish of St. Bernard is due to the inventory tax. So every local governmental body's income would decrease in property tax by twenty-eight percent. To us, that would mean three-point-seven million dollars. Now, what we use that for is salaries and benefits and materials and supplies. It would be a drastic situation. St. Bernard Parish, being one of the river parishes, is one of the parishes most, most affected by this piece of legislation. In fact, we are either the third or the fourth highest percentage parish in the state of Louisiana for its reliance on the inventory tax. This would be devastating not only to the school system, but to parish government, to the levy board, to water districts, to everyone that collects any millage within St. Bernard Sheriff's Department, everyone collecting millage. There is some talk about compromise in phasing it out, but even a phase out, if you're looking at a twenty-five percent reduction, you divide four into three-point-seven million for us, and we're looking at over nine-hundred-thousand dollars. That's a significant number of teachers and employees that we would have to reduce within the school system to meet that. So what we have here tonight is a resolution that we have prepared that we're asking you to consider that would voice our opposition to this particular movement. Today, I was in Baton Rouge for the Bessie meeting, and I had to stay at the Bessie meeting because we had an item on the agenda. Instead of going to a meeting with the municipal governments and sheriff's departments throughout the state, statewide associations, to see how they were going to combat this, or at least try to look into discussions of what we could do in lieu of different scenarios that are being presented. There are some parts of the state which will be affected very little by this, and that's part of the problem because there are some legislators out there from different communities that really have almost no reliance on this inventory tax whatsoever. But those all along the river region really are the most heavily hit by this. So what we're asking you to do is, we drafted this resolution for your discussion purposes tonight, and asked that you would approve it, and we would do it at the, at the regular board meeting, and then send that to our legislative delegation. We have met with, we met with Representative Garret Fowler, who realizes the seriousness of this, and if there is no mechanism for our recouping it through any other way, would say that he would oppose this, obviously. He would, he would be in support of us and oppose any legislation that would eliminate that inventory tax without a mechanism to recoup those funds. So local governmental bodies in this parish would be decimated by this if that repeal took place.
So I mean, I could read this if you would like me to.
Yeah, before you read it, I think that would be good. To add insult to injury, though, is a companion bill that not, not only would take the ad valorem tax receipts away from us, but it would tell us, we cannot replace it with a tax locally to reestablish funds to make up for what we've lost. That's, that's really, really bad when you get to that point. Take it away and then say, hey, you can't do anything locally to recoup any funds to make up for this loss to support the schools, schools in the parish.
And the, the debt service portion, every governmental body really issues bonds, which we, we know that those bonds are serviced by a millage that is assessed each year from all different governmental bodies to pay off the principal and interest for that particular year. And the millage has to be the amount of mills necessary to pay the principal and interest. Well, if this inventory tax is repealed, and that's not part of the calculation, the bonds still have to be paid off. So that would increase property taxes for all homeowners to pay those bonds off because that inventory tax would no longer enter into the mix, which is twenty-eight percent of each mill.
So everybody's affected?
So everybody, yeah, everybody's affected by this if that would proceed in this manner.
Thank you, Ms. Votche, for making that point. And I was going to ask, you know, that we clarify that the homeowners won't be paying any additional, you know, this is not going to affect homeowners unless they do cease with the, with the inventory tax. The inventory tax is only going to affect the manufacturers, the distributors and retailers that hold the inventory. But it's not going to, you know, by having this tax, it's not going to affect the homeowners unless this is repealed or discontinued.
And the portion that will be for debt service?
The debt service may increase.
Right.
So, okay. Thank you, Ms. Votche. And hopefully, we'll get more support throughout the state to, to oppose this bill. Thank you.
I suggest you read that where it'd be in the record there.
Whereas Senate Bill eighty-five of the twenty-fifteen Louisiana Legislature urges certain changes in the current provisions for ad valorem taxes levied against manufacturers, distributors and retailers that hold inventory. And whereas such changes would represent a twenty-eight percent decrease in the amount of ad valorem taxes collected by governmental bodies in St. Bernard Parish, causing additional financial distress to already economically-strapped public entities. And whereas the St. Bernard Parish School Board alone would see an annual decrease of three-point-seven million dollars of ad valorem taxes collected on its behalf, creating additional financial hardship for the district, be it therefore resolved that the St. Bernard Parish School Board respectfully requests that its legislative delegation, along with all members of the legislature, stand against Senate Bill eighty-five and stand in support of financially-distressed public entities. And be it further resolved that a copy of the resolution be forwarded to the members of the legislative delegation representing St. Bernard, to remaining members of the Senate and House, and to other school boards within the state of Louisiana.
Joint resolution?
Yeah, that was... Go ahead.
Would you all like a joint resolution?
Do we have a motion?
That is a motion.
A joint resolution?
Just call for the vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Agenda item ten, we have the bus bid tabulation. And so we have Mr. Halton.
Hello.
We do have the tabulation on the bus bid for ten new school buses. We sent out three bids to, three dealers that have responded in the past to, to our bid. We received one bid, and it was from Kent Mitchell and Ham in Louisiana. And they proposed a Thomas safety line, a C-two, sixty-six passenger bus. It would be a brand-new bus. It would either be year two thousand sixteen or two thousand and seventeen. The price, we asked for two prices, a price without air conditioning and a price with air conditioning. So their price, quote, "without air conditioning" was eighty-thousand, nine-hundred-and-twenty-four dollars per bus for a total of eight-hundred-and-nine-thousand, two-hundred-and-forty dollars. The price with air conditioning, air conditioning, was eighty-six-thousand, twenty-four dollars, a total price of eight-hundred-and-sixty-thousand, two-hundred-and-forty dollars. The difference between with air and without air is fifty-one-hundred dollars a bus for a total of fifty-one-thousand dollars. The, the warranty information on, on the buses is, from what I understand, this is the best warranty in, that you can get for school bus. The body and chassis, it's a three-year, fifty-thousand-dollar, fifty-thousand-mile warranty. The engine is five years, hundred thousand miles. Transmission is five years unlimited. And the air conditioning, if we decided, if the board decided to purchase the buses with air conditioning, would be two years on the air conditioning.
And let me just add to this, just for informational purposes. As we know, after Katrina, we lost almost all of our buses in, in the flood. We have a few pre-Katrina buses that we still have. I know Dr. Gonzalez is sitting over there, so if I make any wrong statements, she can correct me. But we've got four or five buses still that are pre-Katrina buses that we would take out of service. But immediately after the storm, we began buying new buses, so we bought them ten or fifteen at a time as we went along. But we have to also realize that that's nine and a half, almost ten years ago. And these buses now are exceeding the mileage that we like to have in our fleet. Now, one good thing that we did, because we are very good fiscal managers, with the FEMA project worksheet for our fleet, we anticipated and planned for all of this. So we still have monies that will cover the entire cost of these, these buses with FEMA funds, so we do not have to go into the general fund to pay for any of these vehicles this time around. So if, as we replace these ten buses, we can do so from that project worksheet that we have nursed over the years and planned as we have continued to provide additional buses for the system.
And that's enough money in that fund to provide air conditioning?
Absolutely. Yes, there is enough money to do that.
Do we have any other questions?
Go ahead and make that motion.
Okay, a motion made by Dr. Lewis.
I've got a question.
Oh, okay. We have a question?
Which one we approve to go to the board?
With air conditioning?
I revise my motion to say with air conditioning.
Seconded by Mr. Warner?
With air conditioning?
With air conditioning. Okay. Any other questions?
Ms. Votche, don't we have a millage that we would collect on to?
We do have a millage that can be used for purchasing of buses, the asbestos removal and instructional M&amp;As, and we can split that among those categories. But what we can do now, purchasing this with those FEMA funds, which are dedicated to the vehicles and the buses, will allow us then, this current year, to use those millages for instructional materials for the kids.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I have a quick question. Ms. Votche, so the FEMA funds would be exhausted for buses at this point, or there's still...
We still have a few dollars that we have left. So that as we, that we probably will have maybe a few more with that, yes.
A few more air-conditioned buses.
What do we have, Mr. Fernandez, about two million, maybe? So we're great. We negotiate very well.
I know that.
Any other questions? All right, vote your machines.
That's how you negotiate.
Motion passes, seven-zero.
Yes, sir.
You're next.
Agenda item number eleven, appointment of an architect for the new elementary school on the school board approval list. Mr. Fernandez, Mr. Carey?
Thank you, Mr. Warner.
You're welcome.
Okay. We're here to request or recommend to the board an architect for the new elementary school that we will, we will be building. We formed, committee was formed, which consisted of Mr. Carey, Building and Ground Supervisor, Mr. Alonso and myself. And what we did basically is we went back to the school board's approved list of architects that was generated from our request qualifications in the past, and we looked at the list of architects that were approved by the school board and evaluated them based on a few criteria, which included their experience with our projects, their experience working with FEMA projects, because this will be a FEMA project, and just their general competency. And we would like to recommend to the board the firm of Keane, Oubre and Associates. Basically, the reason we recommend is, they have done several of our projects, including three elementary schools. They have worked extensively with FEMA and other regulations, and have even helped us, helped us negotiate with FEMA to gain additional funds. And they have been very professional, done a very good job. So that is our recommendation for the architect for this school. We'll be happy to answer any questions. Mr. Carey, wants anything?
Yeah, this is my recommendation also. They've been very good to work with, and they've done, done the schools in a timely manner, and they've helped us a great deal in getting a lot of the stuff off the ground.
Yeah, Mr. Warner?
Any questions from board members? Dr. Kraft?
I move that we appoint the architectural firm there to do this work because time is of essence, which sorely needed to, our, many of the elementary schools are already above capacity, so we need to start breaking ground as soon as possible. So the architect is the first step in this direction. So I'll make that motion.
All right, got a motion on the floor?
I'll second the question.
Seconded by Mr. England, go ahead.
Okay, my question is, how long is it going to take to process?
Well, we're looking, it's okay to talk about this.
Yeah.
If everything goes according to FEMA, we would like to have this ready for school year twenty-seventeen.
The beginning of the school.
Yes, the beginning of school year twenty-seventeen.
Right. And I, and I think what, as, to expand on a little bit more, as we have rebuilt schools according to our master plan that this board developed immediately after the storm, in the eastern end of the parish, as far as elementary schools, we're doing extremely well. We have plenty of space. When we built the new Gochet and the new Smith Elementary Schools, we do have sufficient classroom space for expansion. As we move to the middle of the parish, we are experiencing tremendous population growth. We currently have at Lacoste Elementary nine-hundred students, which we would like to decrease that enrollment somewhat. And the schools that are neighboring Lacoste are growing in population as well. So we need something right in the middle of the parish, which would probably be between where Lacoste is and Chalmette Elementary. And we're, these are real kind of delicate and timely negotiations because we have FEMA funding involved and regulations as to what you have to do before you break ground and what approvals, and we're just going to go ahead and we're going to do our own thing. And as usual, we're going to expect them to catch up to us because we are, we desperately, the need for speed, you know, is urgent at this point. I've made that clear to them. We're trying to get them to approve what's called a forced relocation project, and if that happens, that'll be the first, will be another first in, in, yeah, will be the first time they have done this in the history of a catastrophe. So, and we think we're very close to it, which will provide that additional funding. They've been extremely good partner for us, and they've always put children first. So we're very, very fortunate that we've had such great partnership with them.
Okay, Ms. Dyson?
I just want to say, I am extremely excited about this project. I know myself, as well as other board members, have, have, you know, feel the crunch in the elementary schools, and, which is a good thing. We're growing in St. Bernard Parish, and we have a lot, a lot of young students, and it's a great thing. But we are being crunched in, in all of our elementary schools, so it'll be really, it'll be wonderful to get this project up and off the ground. And I want to thank the Miro Foundation for, for working with us to try to obtain some land to build a new school, and also thank the administration that we have been asking for their help. help to, um, alleviate this, this, um, you know, problem, it's, it's a good problem to have more students, but it's a, you know, it's gonna be great to have another elementary school, you know, where we can keep all of our schools, uh, at smaller numbers, and it's, it's very, very, um, needed and unnecessary, and again, I thank the administration and the Miro Foundation for working with us on this project. And also, uh, Lekeen O, um, Oubre, they, they've been working, they've worked on us, with us, several FEMA projects, but also did a lot of things even pro, you know, in-between, and...
Right, they've always been very helpful to us.
Always very, very helpful, yes. Okay, well, thank you, and, um, we look forward to getting this project off the ground. Thank you.
All right, any other discussion? Dr. Craft?
Yeah, it's, it's something that, uh, as Ms. Daisar indicated, we can get excited about, because we've been seeing these numbers creeping up and creeping up, and, uh, after a while, too much creeping can cause a big problem for us. So I think in the, uh, timely way, this is gonna come out at a good time, that we can, uh, take and break ground and have a school by the school year, uh, beginning in August of twenty-seventeen, so that's, that's good. We appreciate your help, Mr. Carey, in, uh, moving this project forward, so, uh, if we all stay focused, I think this will help the school system, because the last thing we want is, uh, uh, overpopulated area without the adequate schools to accommodate these students, so that's, uh, that's, that's the plan, and, uh, the dream will be fulfilled, and that's, that is exciting. Thank you very much, that's it.
All right.
I have another question.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there any way we can lessen the, um, project timeline, Mr. Carey?
I don't think so. I think, you know, it's gonna be very, too, hard to get this as it stands now, you know? Uh, we don't want them, some of the other schools, contractor stays around for months after the school is open, and we, we don't wanna do that, we want it to be finished and ready for the kids to move in.
Okay.
So, uh, it's hard to get it much less time than that.
There's no way we could have it for the beginning of next school year?
No.
And then if you try to move kids in mid-year, that's, that's a disaster, because that's going to entail then splitting up and redistricting, so, you know, the start of the second school year would be...
We're gonna do everything we can to make it go faster.
And I know, Ms. Daisar, we're all anxious.
I was just trying to push you.
We're all anxious.
Trying to push you. Okay. It's just so needed. Yes. Okay, thank you.
We have a motion on the floor by Dr. Craft, and a second by Mr. England. Would everyone please vote?
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you.
This was your superintendent's recommendation.
Uh, nothing specific, as usual, we're in the middle of testing, as we will be, as we said, from, uh, February through the end of the school year, so this week, the students in grades three through eight are taking the social studies and science parts of the LEAP and ILEAP, um, shortly followed by Phase Two of park testing for grades three through eight, and end-of-course testing for our high school students in those six areas, so, um, it's going to be quite a challenging, um, end of the year, but I'm sure everyone is going to do extremely well as usual, so...
Sounds great. Your motion to adjourn.
Next week we have our regular board meeting.
Yes, we have our meeting next week because of the legislative day at the Capitol.
I'll make the motion. Let's see, we got a motion, guys, second. All in favor of adjourn? Say if I was saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Just adjourn. So, if you're coming, have a good night.